Good evening to you all. Welcome to the Monday, July 24, 2017, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all here with us this evening. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
I'll move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Our first proclamation, as we get started this evening, is regarding systems administrators. And so I'm going to read that this evening, and I'm delighted to have some of our system administrators here, so I can see in the audience, because they've helped me with my computer before. So I'm going to go ahead and read this if I could. Whereas, "Systems administrators are responsible for the upkeep, configuration, and reliable operation of information technology systems, from critical public safety systems to cloud-based applications to desktop computers. Whereas, Systems Administrator Appreciation Day was established in July 28, 2000, and is celebrated around the world, with 2017 marking the 18th annual celebration. Whereas, information technology systems are critical in supporting all operations, service, public safety, and the city's future growth and sustainability. Whereas, the city's IT services and support staff are dedicated to ensuring new technologies are effectively implemented and sustained, in addition to managing and maintaining all IT systems. Whereas, the IT services and support team is steadfastly committed to the highest quality of work, to ensure that proper security standards are maintained, to protect personal information and confidential or sensitive data. Whereas, the IT services team maintains a strong presence in both regional and statewide multi-jurisdictional initiatives, keeping the little city in the forefront as a respected partner jurisdiction in the region and throughout the Commonwealth. Whereas, the IT services mission statement, to provide exceptional enterprise technology solutions to support our customers, both external and internal, so that they can meet their business goals and deliver services effectively and efficiently, has been a core guiding principle as to how they continuously operate by their tagline motto, 'The Little City, Working IT Together.'" Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim July 28, 2017, as Systems Administrator Appreciation Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge the citizens to join in recognizing the significant importance of our city's IT services and support team, as well as other system administrators and their valuable contributions to our everyday lives. So, thank you so much, and I tell you, I imagine we have a team of folks here. If you guys would come forward, we'd love to give you our regards in person. I imagine this is some of your equipment as well here. So come on forward, and that's the IT team from Falls Church. Thank you so much for your great work. Thanks for bringing those out, and thanks for all the great work you guys do, day in and day out, to keep us all running. Madam Clerk, do we have any oaths of office to administer today?
I believe so.
So is anyone here to be admitted to a board or commission to receive their oaths of office? Why don't you come forward, and you come over to the clerk, and she will give you a little bit of paperwork to fill out. We thank you for your good work and your contributions to our community, for volunteering.
Right hand. I solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, and perform all the duties and obligations upon you, as a member of your board or commission, according to the best of your abilities, so help you God. You're all set.
You should all come forward, and we can give you our congratulations and thanks in person here. Thank you for volunteering.[378.41][378.41][applause] Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. Madam Clerk, would you read the summary of written comments for us, please?
Regarding the CIP Campus Referendum and Capital Projects, Barbara Conati and Rosemary Ziskind both asked the Council to keep the library renovation project on schedule. The Village Preservation and Improvement Society urged the Council to defer the referendum for school financing until there was more concrete information about the cost of the school and the economic development. Peter Kunniff, and Stacy Evers, and Tina Erman support the modified CIP approach. The Falls Church Chamber of Commerce and Rosalie Cosbelt both urged the Council to adopt the referendum ordinance. Christina Newes submitted an article analyzing the impact of school operating costs on the city's budget. Peter Smirny Atopoulos wrote with comments and suggestions regarding marketing the 10 acres at the school campus. 16 comments were received in support of moving forward with the installation of artificial turf fields at Larry Graves Park. Laura von Schrillts wrote to oppose installing artificial turf at Larry Graves Park. And on other items, Mary Chavez and Diane and Tom Duggan wrote to voice their continued concerns about the Broad and Washington project. Falls Church Chamber of Commerce wrote in support of the Railroad Avenue cottages project. Pat Brown wrote to outline his concerns about the Railroad Avenue cottages project. Village Preservation and Improvement Society asked that the Council and Planning Commission decline to move forward with the request to rezone historic homes owned by Columbia Baptist Church.
All right, thank you very much. So we have about five speaker slips right now. If there's anyone in the audience, now we have six. If there's anyone else going once, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak tonight, we would just ask that you fill out one of these red speaker slips, which are available in the lobby, and hand them to the clerk, and she'll pass them forward to me. We would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address for the record. You can either speak now, or you can speak when the item that you're interested in comes up, it's your choice. If you'd like to do that, just let me know. But anyway, let's go ahead and get started. Our first speaker is Amanda Henenberg. Welcome. Followed by Beth Han.
My name is Amanda Henenberg, and I live on 2801 Flagmaker Drive in Falls Church City. I've lived here nearly my whole life. I grew up here, graduated from George Mason in 2001, and chose to move back to Falls Church as a young adult. I'm speaking today because I'm concerned that the actions of the City Council in regards to the ongoing development projects are going to fundamentally destroy the community that I call home. Whether it's Broad and Washington, Railroad cottages, or the disaster that is Founders Row, all of them have the same underlying problems. They add to the traffic with no solution, they add to the parking problems with no solution, they add to the school size with no solution, and their financial contribution does nothing to lessen the tax burden for residents. But even more, they start to chip away at the foundation of who we are as a city, a small, engaged population connected to each other, by turning us into just another Northern Virginia corridor with transient populations. People choose to live in Falls Church because it's unique and a respite from the surrounding areas. It's supposed to be a place where you make lifelong friends in kindergarten, get a private school education because your class size is so small, you can walk with your friends at night and feel safe, and your families and neighbors actually know each other. These development projects and the ones before them, especially with the ridiculous addition of so many apartments, threaten to undermine these core values of our community. These issues aren't just something we need to worry about for the future. I would like to leave you with a concrete example of what is happening now. These decisions you all are making are already affecting people in our community and those who would like to be in our community. My brother William, who also grew up here and bought a house here after college, and actually ran against some of you for the City Council, recently embarked on a house search with his wife and young family. Even though Falls Church was their first choice, they ultimately decided to move outside of here, because the unique nature of the city has all but vanished. The community aspect of Falls Church has been eroded, our schools no longer have the market cornered, and our community leaders have not defended our young girls from harm. The financial tax burden simply no longer made sense for them. I fear his is the untold story of many people around our age, and the City Council continues to make the same decisions and mistakes over and over again, promising development deals that will better the community, but in reality end up burdening the city with mixed use in developments that drain our resources and limited infrastructure. Sadly, you all seem to be content with trading people who are willing to put down real roots and right the ship for dollar signs. Please consider these comments, and not only slow down the process for these projects, but a stop to the elements that are detrimental to Falls Church. With an election this fall, I hope you put the opinions and concerns of your citizens and the future of Falls Church over developers who are only interested in lining their pockets full of cash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, okay, our next speaker is Beth Han, followed by Charlie O'Hara.
Thank you. Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly, and Council members, my name is Beth Han. I live at 127 Tollgate Way. I am the Falls Church Elementary Liaison to the School Board. On behalf of the Elementary PTA Executive Board, I'm sharing our concerns with the modified CIP that the City Council is considering this evening. This plan pushes back the expansion of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School from 2022 to 2025. At 835 students, which was the peak enrollment for the 2016-2017 school year, TJ is currently at or over capacity. The move of second grade to Mount Daniel in 2018 will provide sorely needed breathing room at TJ, but what happens in 2021, when it is projected that Mount Daniel will reach capacity? If the 244 projected second graders are moved back to TJ, that would bring the projected total enrollment at TJ to 955 students. While we support building a new high school, and understand, and even share concerns about tax increases for our citizens and debt burden for the city, we can't sacrifice TJ in the process. As representatives of the elementary families, we can't, in good conscience, support the modified CIP without a plan in writing on how the School Board will handle the overcrowding at TJ. We are asking you to please work together with the School Board, to be transparent and to communicate to teachers, parents, and community members what the full impact of the modified CIP will be on our schools, and how you will ensure that TJ students will continue to receive a quality education with the small class sizes that are integral to helping every child achieve his or her full potential. We thank you for your service to our community and for your willingness to listen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Charlie O'Hara, followed by Mr. DeLong. Mr. DeLong?
My name is Chester W. DeLong, 213 West Columbia Street, Falls Church. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the City Administration. This is a final opportunity to restate my support for the CIP that permits the library project to go forward this year. The more I hear of the school needs, the more convinced I become of the necessity to tackle the library renovation now, to get it done and out of the way of the massive school projects that need to be done. I wish to thank the Council members and the administration for the immense number of hours you have given to balancing the city's needs. You should know that your hard work is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our community. Our next speaker is Mr. Lamoney. Oh, you want to wait till, okay, that's fine. Okay, our last speaker is Ross Littenhouse. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ross Littenhouse, 1105 Seaton Lane. I'm here tonight as a citizen and voter, but most importantly, I'm here on behalf of my wife Sarah and our three young daughters. Sarah and I moved to Falls Church to raise a family, and we also felt compelled to move here for the incredible sense of community, which I think is on full display here in forums like this. And for the sake of our kids' futures, like many of us in this room, we moved here because of the emphasis on quality education. I'm here to urge Council and all of my fellow neighbors, community-wide, to support a school bond referendum in November and to fully fund the CIP. I think it's obvious to anyone that has toured George Mason lately that we need to rebuild, and in order to maintain and improve the quality of education the city offers, that needs to be done now. Regardless of that, all of us, as members of this close community, have an obligation to uphold to our children, to the generations after. It's our social contract, if you want to call it that, and that contract demands a commitment to providing the best education we can within our means and abilities. That commitment should also be equal to the commitment we regularly demand from the teachers and staff that we employ to educate our children. But most importantly, that commitment should equal the very same commitment that we expect from our own children as students and future leaders in this community. Our actions here tonight must speak as loud as our words. The discussions on the high school over the last year have covered a lot of ground, none more important than the city's on financial obligations to pay for the construction of the new school, and I think rightfully so, no question. It's another reason I personally felt compelled to speak out again on this tonight. As a commercial real estate professional and someone with experience navigating tax revenue issues related to economic development initiatives, I feel it's important to state publicly that approving a $120 million bond issuance will not be a financial albatross hanging around our collective necks, like some would argue. In fact, I feel that if we pursue a creative seller-financed approach to the land sale, we'll generate more than enough revenue to cover the annual borrowing costs needed for construction. And with the successful delivery of a unique commercial development next door, along with a special taxing district, I can assure you, we will generate a minimum of $5 million in net tax revenue for the city each year once this project is stabilized. To put this in perspective, it's more than 50% higher than what is being conservatively projected today. Ultimately, I'm supremely confident that through the high school construction and land development, we're not only upholding a communal obligation to the kids of this city, but we're also investing in the single greatest opportunity we will have for decades to create meaningful, long-lasting tax revenue, something that may finally give us the opportunity to contemplate lowering the overall property tax burden for all citizens of Falls Church. So I ask you to vote yes for the bonds, and let's come together to deliver a once-in-a-lifetime commercial development that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And that was our last speaker, at least who submitted a slip at this point. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, you're certainly welcome to either now or when your item is called. So unless there's anyone else at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to council requests. Are there any council requests right now? Okay, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I know that city staff and school staff have been working on a very lengthy FAQ document. There are a lot of questions that people have about the school project, and a lot of answers will be available, and we have really gone to great effort to make sure that the answers are correct before they get out there. I'm just wondering what the status of that is, and will it be available soon for the public to see?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly. You are correct, a great deal of work has gone into the FAQs, and they are numerous. There are about 19 pages of FAQs at this point. We're reviewing those right now, and I anticipate that this week we will get those out so that they can be available to the public throughout the summer, and, most importantly, in the fall, in the lead-up to the referendum, if the Council authorizes it tonight. And we will put a caveat out there, those FAQs, we think they'll grow, or they will evolve as new questions are asked, or as new information comes to light, and so we ask for the public's understanding of that fact as we go forward.
Thank you. So you think they'll be up this week, next week?
That's correct. We have been focusing on supporting the Council, just in terms of getting ready for tonight's action on the CIP, and we have the FAQs, they're being reviewed right now, so I think this week, early this week, we'll be able to get those.
Great, thank you very much.
Other council requests? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks much. The National Capital Region Emergency Preparedness Council, which I'm chairing this year, is focused on cybersecurity issues and community response, and I'm wondering if we could follow up with a closed session with some of the systems experts that we had tonight, to, if it's sensitive information, to learn more and assure ourselves that the city is as well protected as it can be from a cybersecurity standpoint, and then, of course, as much public as we can make public would be appreciated. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, any other council requests? Okay, let's move on to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council. I just, one thing I'd like to report, as the Council is aware, and as I've reported earlier this spring, the city conducted an administrative review of our procedures when we go through hiring and recruitment for positions that work with youth, or work with other vulnerable populations in the city on a regular basis. In particular, these are employees that work at the Aurora House, Mary Riley Stiles Public Library, and our Wreckin' Parks Department, most frequently, it's employees in those departments. We have done a scrub of all of our hiring practices, our screening practices, our reference-checking practices, our reference checks with Child Protective Services, and we've clarified a few things that will be helpful for us as we go forward. We've also put in a new requirement for employees that are with the city to have those background checks done on a regular basis and maintained, even after they have employment with the city. So I want to thank our HR staff, and the staff of all the departments I just named, and the city attorney for that, and we anticipate that that admin regulation will go into effect tomorrow, after an internal comment period on that. It does have a bearing on how we work with our volunteers as well, so our Wreckin' Parks staff and our library staff will be working with our volunteers on these procedures as well. We think it will be helpful and effective and promote public safety here.
Thank you very much. And now, you're sure, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, thank you for that report. I'm glad that that has been done. I'm wondering, could you coordinate with the school's HR department as well, because I know that they have been doing a similar review, just to see if you're on the same page, doing the same things, or could learn from one another?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
I had a similar comment, but I also wanted to ask whether we have a policy in place to do a regular review, so that we don't just revisit our procedures and review when we have issues, but we do it regularly. Is there a schedule for that?
Well, we are going through all of our admin regs right now, or ADM, or ARs, as we call them, it's a book about this thick that governs basically all of the policies and procedures in the city relating to personnel management issues. And we're overdue for a scrub of those. We have, I think the last time we did it was about 10 years ago. I would like to do it more frequently than that, they do get, they get pretty moldy, and practice tends to stray from what's written. And so let me get back with you in terms of whether we'll have a formal policy on, you know, a five-year review of all of them, or something like that. I'd like to discuss that with staff, and then get back with you on that policy.
Mr. Snyder?
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, actually, one more request, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But, so we had a citizen raise some issues regarding development, and I wondered if the city manager could prepare whatever data is available to respond to those questions, and then, to the extent that some are data-related and others are more quality-of-life issue. But I know the city has released a lot of information on development, and I think it would be helpful to bring that together and share it with the citizen who raised questions to continue our dialogue with that citizen. Thank you.
Okay, any other requests? If not, Mr. Shields, did you have a manager's report, or did we just hear it? All right, thank you. Why don't we move on, then, to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
First item has two titles now. So there's TO 17-11A, Ordinance to amend ordinance 1971 regarding the FY 2018 to FY 2022 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the fiscal year 2018. That's the full CIP. And then there's TO 17-11B, Ordinance to amend ordinance 1971 regarding the FY 2018, FY 2022 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the fiscal year 2018, the modified CIP option.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council. As was anticipated last spring, when the Council first adopted the capital improvements program without a high school project in it, the schools have completed a feasibility study, and we've taken the results of that feasibility study and built that now formally into the CIP that is before the Council tonight for second reading. As the lead-up to the second reading, we've had many meetings, and I just want to note a few of those. We first reviewed the finances behind the CIP on June 19, had a public hearing on June 26. The Planning Commission was briefed on July 3. We had another public hearing on July 10. The Planning Commission took its action on July 7 after another public hearing, and then on July 19, we had a town hall meeting on the financing plan for the CIP as a whole. Through this discussion, we have before the Council for second reading what we have termed the full CIP, which is the CIP that you adopted last spring, plus the school project. In addition to that, staff has proposed for discussion and for the Council's review, and is recommending a modified CIP to reduce some of the city's financial exposure for that period of time between now and when the anticipated land transaction would occur on the campus, which is very important for the financial feasibility of that school project. And so all this public input has really been designed to allow the community to express its views, which we think there's been a very good discussion on these, and that really has served the purpose of providing some options for the Council to consider prior to adopting this CIP. We do have the presentation that's available tonight. I know that everybody on the day has seen it multiple times. We would like to just go through it, we'll go through quickly, and we do have one additional piece of information. This presentation has had some sort of new inputs of information. About halfway through the public process, we started including the projected tax yield, as well as the financial impact of the land transaction for the 10 acres on the campus site. And tonight, in response to multiple questions and a lot of discussion from the public that were expressed on the Wednesday town hall meeting as well, questions about how the capital planning fits in with the city's operating budget projections. So we do have two slides on some trends on the expense side, as well as trends on the revenue side, and projecting those forward. We do think that those are, it's interesting information. Traditionally, the city spends more time on the operating projections in the fall, and we'll do that again this year. The year-end financial report will come to the City Council in September, and then, of course, we do our FY 19 budget planning in November, and as part of that, we have our forecasts for the operating budgets, as well as debt service, which has really been the focus of our discussion for the capital improvements program. program. I'm looking over at here, and it appears that we don't have anything up on the screen. Is there? There we go. So we won't, because many people have seen this presentation multiple times, we're not going to go through it in as detailed a way as we have in the past. We would refer people to the taped versions of all the meetings that have occurred prior and the most recent version from last Wednesday. So with that, let me turn it over to Ms. Bawa. And also, let me thank Ms. Bawa and the finance staff, who've done a lot of work on, for a long period of time, but really coming to a focus just in the last two months and doing the full analysis along with our outside financial advisor on the financing plan for our capital improvements program.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. We have some new information for you in the CIP, five-year CIP. You have a slide in front of you which provides three-year, five-year, and seven-year average for trends on operating budgets. Normally, we bring this to you in November when we are doing the annual budget planning. What we have included in here is a new line item, general fund revenues, net of tax increases. So essentially, to capture the revenue growth purely from economy as a result of the economy changes and not any operating gaps that have been filled as a result of, to bridge the gap, to balance the budget between the revenue and the expenditures. You will notice here, and the expenditures are broken down into general government for each of the three categories and the schools. So we'll take the average line, total average expenditures and general fund revenues. I'll bring your attention to the seven-year average. The expenditure increase has been at an average of 4%, whereas the revenue increases as a result of the economy changes has been close to 3%. So in effect, we are using, over the seven-year period, the council approved six pennies increase on the tax bill to close this gap. And looking at the revenue and the expenditure projections going forward from fiscal year 19 all the way to 29, you'll see the blue line is the revenues projected at the seven-year average, 2.9%, and the expenditures at the 4%. So there is a gap that will need to be addressed and requires one cent in those terms to close this gap going forward.
One cent in total or each year?
Each year. And it can, you know, like if the expenditures or the AV increases as a certain percentage, that penny value changes, so at a constant increase, which would be, because now the penny is 380-some thousand dollars, the value of the penny kind of changes over the years. So.
So what you're saying is if past trends, the past seven years were extrapolated out, that's what they would show?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, the past seven years, as you showed on the slide before this, show that operating budgets, both school and city, have increased faster than revenue to the city. And so we've ended up raising taxes six cents over the past seven years to address that. And you're saying if that were doing to continue that exact same trend without modification, that would require another six cents if, in fact, those budgets weren't addressed and the revenue stayed as projected?
Starting at a 1% increase and then going forward. You want to add something, Mr. Shields?
Yeah, and again, in the fall with the year-end financials, we can do a more granular projection and try to identify specific cost drivers. This is really just taking everything in aggregate and taking the past seven years and projecting those trends forward to the next seven years. And really, the only point that is made in doing that is that we do have, we have a trend on the revenue side that is not sufficient to cover the trend on our expenditure side. I think that is a feature of the national economy. Revenues are not growing as they have in the post-war era. If you take longer-term ranges, revenues, some of our longer-term trends were organic revenue growth of about 4.5%. And that's really what built a lot of what we see around us in Northern Virginia. Since the recession and then followed with sequestration, these numbers of 2.9% annual organic revenue growth, I think they're slightly higher than the region. But they're, that's, if that's the new normal, then that's what, you know, all of the local government managers, this is what we talk about, is how we deal with the new normal. And we've been talking about it for years. So with a very significant capital improvements program, there's no question with the debt service that we'll be taking on, there will be more pressure on the operating budgets and more pressure on our taxpayers than is currently the case. And so there will be pressure on our operating budgets. That was a key message that we've been making throughout this capital planning process. It came up repeatedly in the questions and responses on Wednesday night, and so we wanted to have that discussion with the council tonight as well.
Let me start at the end, Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. So to put another way, I guess, given the gap between what revenue and ops costs have been, it seems like we either need to manage ops costs really tightly or we need to grow revenue a lot. Do we have sense of how much we need to grow revenue to get it to be 4%?
I mean, it's clearly 1% of the budget, right? 4% and 3%.
But in terms of like development projects or increase in yield on existing projects, for example, like, do we have sense of magnitude of actual dollars?
Well, you know, each percentage point is about $800,000. So that gives an indication. The, one thing that I would just note also that's been a feature of our budgets, particularly the last two years, that, well, two years ago, 80% of the revenue growth came from new construction and new economic activity. This past year, 50% of it did. So what's actually happening kind of in the established economy is even lower than these percentages that are happening here. So the new construction, which has been, some of the biggest pieces of it have been policy-driven, economic development efforts by the city, they have significantly moved the needle over the three, five, and seven-year averages. So we don't discount that and, as, you know, as we're thinking about how we solve this in the future. But it is worth noting that even with those efforts, when you go against some of the headwinds that the regional economy has faced in the past four years, that 2.9% is lower than what has historically been the case in Northern Virginia.
I guess I would just summarize that one would argue that numbers like that don't look sustainable, especially when we look at a very aggressive CIP with a big debt service. And so I don't think it's an either-or on whether we manage our costs more tightly or whether we grow revenues. Clearly, we have to do both here.
Sure. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I note, there's one line that we haven't talked much about, and that's the school enrollment line. And interestingly enough, the increases in government expenditures tend to track very closely the school enrollment, which makes a lot of sense, it seems to me. You can have a growing community with people moving in because they want the schools, or you can have a dying community where people leave and average age goes up and up and up. So I think that's a correlation that I don't think we can ignore. And I would assume the overall population increase is a percentage or so close to that somewhere. So I think that's interesting. Growing community, growing school costs, of course, require more expenditure. Second factor that isn't up there is the whole structure of school funding at the state level. The local composite index, for example, where Loudoun County's average household income is $3,000 less than Falls Church, gets a huge amount more from the state per capita than does the city of Falls Church because of a rigged statewide average that punishes Arlington, Alexandria, and Falls Church in a very unique way compared to even Fairfax County, for example. So if you put in a very even decent funding from the state for education, which is nothing but a return to the taxpayers who have already paid, you have nowhere even near 50% return, you would be able to eliminate all these tax increases that we've had to pass over the last few years. So that's a factor that I don't think should be lost here, is the impact of a rigged school funding formula that punishes particularly those jurisdictions with high real estate costs. The irony there, of course, is that the higher your real estate costs are, the less discretionary income you have. So that's a factor that shouldn't be ignored in looking at that as well. So thanks much for the opportunity to present that.
Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Could you show me the alligator jaws chart, the next one? So the managers often said that this is the annual challenge that we face, to try to make that red and blue lines come together. What I heard you say was that we're about a penny off a year, so roughly $400,000. So I've always assumed that, and brought this up some time ago, that if operating costs on the city side could stay at 2.5%, that's natural growth, and operating costs on the school side could stay at 2.5% for, say, three years, then we would be able to undertake this ambitious CIP with some expectation that, you know, we would be putting pressure on to bring those jaws together. Is that basically correct? I mean, we've not modeled what would be the case if schools remained at 2.5% for three years, but is it roughly the case that that would help close this gap, at least in the near years?
The annual difference is about 1%. So I do think it's a manageable issue. I think these are all issues that are fully within our ability to grapple with and close the alligator jaws, as you said. If you do it on an annual basis, it's about 1%. If a local government, and I wouldn't say we're going to do that here, but where local governments get in trouble is if they don't make those structural changes on an annual basis to balance the budget, but sort of push things off, then it compounds. It becomes a 2% problem the next year. And at the end, you know, at the tip of the alligator jaws, it's a 10% problem.
Right. I mean.
So on an annual basis, we close that gap, and I think we can do that in the future.
At least it's been my experience over five years working on budgets with you all, that, you know, we don't take a year off. I mean, every year, we are fighting this, you know, in the trenches. And I've assumed that after tonight's vote, however it goes, you know, we'll renew that discussion. And, you know, the school superintendent at the town hall meeting, you know, reminded us that he's shown a 4% operating budget increase and seemed open to a discussion about, you know, this issue and understands the big picture and understands that, you know, the extraordinary costs of the school capital program make this particularly timely to engage. And in order to, you know, help the citizens feel more at ease, maybe we could reach some sort of a two- or three-year agreement, which enables us to, you know, do some longer-term planning. If we could, you know, agree that operating costs would be at a manageable level for two or three years, that would help us in the early years of the CIP program for the other projects also. Okay, thanks.
Well, it seems to suggest that we have to at least look at the possibility of a one penny per year increase for the next seven years. What other strategies are we pursuing that you recommend so that we don't have to wait until November to have this discussion? We may as well begin it tonight.
Well, I think that, you know, there are a lot of strategies. It's probably not one strategy. I think that both on the schools and the general government side, we'll have to manage our finances within what the economy is giving us. If that's the direction from the council, then we will, we need to bring those proposals to the council on how we will do that. And I don't have, I'm not prepared tonight to say exactly how to do that, because each budget season, there's a whole host of things that we do to close the gap.
Just to follow up, the, over the last three years, I think it's acknowledged that most of our costs run the city government, and the school costs are primarily personnel. We pride ourselves in government to run fast and lean, and we urge you to hire the best and to train those that are younger, need the experience. That's been our model, it's a good model. But nonetheless, they do well, and we've been seeing personnel increases outside of pensions and benefits of about 3% per year. I would expect that to continue going forward. No one here would want the city staff to lose their place in the economic line. The schools, on the other hand, we've been funding a catch-up, if you will, with Arlington, within 5% of that. And I'm not sure where we are now, but this could be year five coming up. This could be year five plus one with Arlington reacting to what we've done as well. So again, the schools' costs and personnel are about 85% as I understand it. And so if that's true, then we're remiss if we didn't recognize those realities of life. So I'm glad we're having this conversation tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think this is, it's sobering, although this really is the ghost of Christmas future. It has not yet come to pass and does not need to come to pass. But I think it's good we're having this conversation now because it is entirely relevant and appropriate to discuss these issues in the same breath as our conversations about CIP, because they're all intertwined. But we can change the future. We don't have to repeat the trajectory of the past. And so I think a renewed emphasis on fiscal management and particularly these next couple of years, as Mr. Duncan said, but also on a renewed emphasis on economic development, I think is necessary in these coming years. Mr. Shields, did you have any other slides or is it just these two you were going to show tonight?
Well, let me take council's direction on that. Would you like to go through it? I know you all have seen it now, I think, five times, so I don't want to belabor through it, but.
Could we have like a 10-second per-slide version of it, just so that we can refer back to a specific slide number?
Yes, I would agree with that. I think it's, it would be useful for us to at least talk about in summary what we have ahead of us, especially with regard to our discussions on the full and modified CIP. For those at home that are trying to watch this, you're being, this is being recorded. We are unfortunately not live tonight. Apparently, there are transmission issues, so it's neither on the Internet nor on Cable 35. So we have a privileged audience here. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't you go through it, Mr. Shields?
The, tonight is the night of action. What is before the council is the CIP amendment, and then what will follow after that is the ordinance to authorize a referendum, which would occur on November 7, 2017. Next slide. This is the referendum question, which would authorize a debt of $120 million for the high school. Next slide. This is our existing debt. We currently have $51.2 million of debt outstanding, 75% of which is dedicated towards funding school improvement. So that's Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, the Mount Daniel School, and the TJ Elementary School, which is the main components of that $37 million of school debt. And the $14 million of city debt, of general government debt, that's the fire station, the community center, and other smaller projects. That's currently servicing that debt is about 8% of our annual budget. And for the taxpayer of the average home in the city, well, that's 16 cents. And for the taxpayer of the average home in the city, well, that's 16 cents on the real estate tax bill for our residents and for all the taxpayers in the city. So the CIP, what, in terms of debt issuance that's in the CIP, we are looking ahead for the library project at 8.7 million, City Hall at 11.7, and there are other projects which total 11.8. So there's 33.2 million of debt-funded projects that are anticipated in the next three years. With the George Mason High School, that's 120 million, plus the Thomas Jefferson Elementary School at 15.3, it would be a total indebtedness of 167 million of new debt. So we would go to 218 million in total debt. That's the red bar on the right, and the blue bar at 51 million is the figure we referenced on the prior slide. That's our current debt. So we're increasing our debt amount by approximately a factor of four, and this is a very significant undertaking financially for the city of Falls Church. So the community school, these are the numbers of how we get to the $120 million figure. This comes out of the feasibility study. Now, as part of our planning for the school, we have had a potential for economic development that's been part of our planning for three years. We've taken multiple steps in that planning process, which have culminated in the school feasibility study that finished this spring, and a land valuation study by the firm of Alvarez &amp; Marcel completed this spring as well. So some of our land development assumptions, we're assuming that approximately 10 acres of land would be brought into private development. We're assuming that on that 10 acres, these are Alvarez &amp; Marcel's assumptions behind their valuation, that about a million square feet would be built there. That's an FAR of about 2.5, and a significant parking component. So with that development program, the 10 acres would have a value of approximately 100, I'm sorry, a value of approximately $43 to $45 million. That would be under a sale or a lease structure. We've also calculated the net tax yield after build-out, and that would be approximately $3.1 million per year in 2031. And so that's using our fiscal impact model that we use for all of our projects and putting this program that I described in the prior slides to project that. So with the full CIP, we have very significant debt service, annual debt service that will come online. So what this chart shows is what our annual debt service is today, and that's the blue lines at the bottom, starting in fiscal year 2017. That's the approximately $6 million per year that I referenced earlier that we pay to service our debt today, and that's about 8% of our budget, or about 16 cents on the tax rate. Then the bars above that, starting in 2018, we have some of the other projects coming online. Most notably, the, sort of, the pink-colored area, that would be the City Hall project coming online, the green share of debt service coming online in 2020 and 2021. That's for the library. Then the big, the red bar is the debt service for the George Mason High School. Now, it is notable that the high school is structured as 30-year debt, whereas all of our other debt is structured as 20-year debt. And so that's, if it were structured as 20-year debt, that bar would be significantly higher, but it would not go out for the full 30 years. It'd only go out for 20 years. TJ Elementary School is on top, and that's the orange band. And then the blue band at the end, that's just a modeling construct of spending $5 billion every other year for the whole host of other CIP items, starting in 2027 and beyond. The purple line is the city's policy target, I'm sorry, policy limit of not exceeding 12% of our annual budget for debt service. So obviously, with the full CIP, we do exceed that. We do have shown sort of the fainter triangles. If the land transaction occurs according to schedule, then those proceeds will go into capital reserves and be used to buy down our annual debt service. So if that plan is executed on time and at the values that have been projected by Alvarez &amp; Marcel, then those triangles are the actual impact on the general fund of the debt service, because the annual debt service would be bought down on an annual basis. So these are the assumptions behind that debt. Again, 120 million with 30-year debt, 11.7 with level principal for City Hall. That's issued in FY 2018. All other projects in the CIP, which include the firing range and land acquisition and other projects, the turf field is in that 11.8 million figure. Those would be issued in 2018 as well. The library, the lion's share of that would be issued in 2019, and TJ Elementary School is assumed to be issued in 2020 under the full CIP modeling assumptions. So in terms of how we would issue that debt, GM, the high school with 30-year debt, we would do 15% of it in 2018. That's to get us through designing and engineering. That's more than we need for that. That could allow construction to start. Then in 2019, we'd get into the construction, the lion's share of that with 45%, and then 40% of the debt issued in 2020. 3.5% to 5% are the assumptions for interest. So in terms of the impact on the tax bill for the average homeowner, that's the Y-axis on the left. So, and starting in 2019, we'd have approximately $600 annual impact if the land transactions all occur according to schedule. And then that could step down to about 7 cents or about $500 on the average tax bill after those, the benefit of those land transactions come online. Now, this is calculated without tax yield from the transaction in that red line. The blue line is the straight cost of what it would finance, what it would cost to finance the full CIP, starting at $900 impact on the average homeowner in the city in FY 19, and then stepping up over time up to over $1,200. So it does illustrate the very strong power of the land transaction and its ability to impact and make the project more affordable. Now, we have then factored in tax yield from the tax acre, from the 10 acres as well, and this is the schedule in which we bring that online. So in 2022, we really just start with an assumption that taxes or tax equivalents, if it's a lease on the raw land, phase one coming online in 2025, phase two in 2027, et cetera, and getting up to the 3.1 million. So in terms of the assumptions, we think the 3.1 million is a reasonable net fiscal impact assumption using our model. We've had some developers say that it could come online faster than this. We've had some other developers tell us that 10 years is probably a pretty reasonable build-out phase for a 10-acre project like this. So we've taken that more conservative, you know, of the range of thoughts on the timing of it. We've taken the more conservative approach on that. So if you factor the tax yield in, then the only thing that's changed in this chart relative to the one, two slides ago is the red line. That has gone down to an impact of $400 for the average homeowner in the city, or 6 cents on the tax rate relative to the 9 cents that was shown earlier. So without tax yield, with tax yield factored in. Now, there are significant risks. We'd be relying on a third party as a key part of our financing plan for the full CIP. So there's market timing risk. Because of the amount of debt, there could be a credit downgrade, which means that 3.5% assumptions for the issuance of debt, up to 5% three years from now. That could be higher. Project costs is, all of these capital projects are complex, and they will be difficult to manage, and there are cost-control risks associated with each of them. There could be other financing needs that might pop up, and then there's the operating cost that we've just discussed earlier. So those were some of the reasons to bring forward and offer for consideration a modified CIP. And so what those were is really moving $30 million of projects until after the land transaction is executed. So other items, the other CIP items, including the turf field and the land acquisition, those are put off until after the transaction. The library's put off until FY 20, FY '22. It's also increased at a 5% annual escalation cost, so that cost goes up to 10.7. And the TJ School is pushed out to 2025. That's the, those changes comprise the 30 million that's moved out. So with the modified CIP, the debt service, we still exceed the policy limit of 12%. With the land transaction, you see the triangles sort of faintly below, and so using reserves in the way that's envisioned in this financing plan, the virtual impact on the general fund would be below the policy target. Modified CIP tax impact without tax yield was anticipated to be with the land sale, 4 cents, or just about $300 for the average homeowner in the city. The blue line represents, again, the modified CIP without any land transactions. And if you factor in the tax yield, the modified CIP has an impact of just over $200, starting in 2019, and then staying pretty steady all the way through until 2038, notionally about a penny decrease in terms of servicing the debt. And then the blue line at the top is unchanged from the prior slide. It's in this slide that we've added the option of not using the land transaction proceeds to buy down debt service, but instead to prepay or to pay early the debt that's been issued for the, for the high school. That has a less powerful impact in the early years, but starting in about 2034 is when those lines cross, and it becomes the cheaper option in the out years. Although with tax yield, those lines end up being very close to each other in the out years as well. So then we have the operating trends that we just discussed. And then we have a whole series of affordability metrics, which are ways that, are independent ways for people to look at the city's debt exposure, and I'll just go through those fairly quickly. But those include debt to assessed value, debt service to total expenses, and debt per capita. Debt to household income is one that we kind of built just uniquely here in Falls Church, but isn't often used by rating agencies or others. But in short, our debt to assessed value today is just over 1%. The average in Northern Virginia is 3% of total debt on your books relative to the total value of real estate in the city. And with both the full and the modified CIPs, we get closer to that policy limit and above the Northern Virginia averages. Debt service to expenditures, this is one, obviously, debt service is going to become a very big and prominent part of our annual operating budgets with either the full or the modified CIP. And we don't show the, sort of, the virtual triangles in this slide, but they would mitigate these impacts. But currently, we're spending about 8% of our annual budget on debt service. The Northern Virginia average is about 10%. And if the land sale doesn't happen, and with the full CIP, we would be over about 17% of our budget would be for debt service. Then debt per capita, that also will be higher than any of our Northern Virginia jurisdictions. Currently, we have about $4,000 per capita in outstanding debt. That's slightly over the Northern Virginia average. And with the full CIP, we'd be close to $14,000 per capita, and with the modified, about $12,000 per capita. And lastly, the debt to household income metric, currently, if you take the total household income of the city and compare that to the outstanding debt, our outstanding debt is about 5, is about 7% of total household income today. That's slightly below average for the region as a metric. With the full and the modified CIP, we would be significantly above average for the region. So again, we've had a good number of meetings on this. This presentation has been shown many times, with the tax yield being added on in mid-July, and then the operating budget discussion just being added in tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We've got questions. We also have some public speakers. Why don't we start with some questions, and then we'll go to our public speakers. Vice Mayor Connolly, then Ms. Hardy.
Ms. Bawa. As we think about the impact of the decision that we make tonight on the CIP, we're not actually making a decision for next tax year on how much the tax rate will go up. Correct?
No, that's correct.
This is a model, and things can change before we actually get to our tax decision next year.
Right. We will bring more finer details on how to structure the debt as we get closer to, after the referendum, and it can go a little bit up and down, but this is the modeling with the assumptions we have presented to you. And the decision on the tax increments will be done as part of the budget adoption in April of next year.
And there are levers that can be changed, or things that can be moved around, even up until we get to next April.
That's correct. And we do a five-year CIP every two years, and we do an amendment every year, so.
So even once we make a decision in April, things can still change as we go along?
Change is the nature of the business.
So like, the operating budget, the CIP, is something that we revisit on a regular basis?
Just like here. Yeah. I mean, we have a five-year adopted CIP. We are proposing a modified, proposing changes if we could delay certain projects or align them differently based on the land sale proceeds.
Okay. Thank you.
Hardy?
Thank you. Could we go back to the slide with the option where we show down the difference between buying down debt versus buying down debt service? So before we talk about the details, I wanted to clarify that we don't need to make the decision on which path we choose tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
We have time to decide on. And could you remind me on what would the financing cost difference between the two options?
50 basis points for buying down debt.
So one of the things I spoke about maybe three meetings ago was the need for kind of a longer-range plan. So instead of a five-year CIP, a 10-year CIP. And I think this is really important for conversations like this, because I think this discussion requires a lot more time, I think, to talk about the merits of both. The reason I think those is because I think in the out years, clearly, one option gives you a lot more flexibility for future projects. And right now, we have a five-year CIP, so we don't really know what projects may come in the 10-year mark or 20-year mark, where we may need that flexibility. And so that's where I think the buying down debt option, you know, requires more conversation. But it's something that I want to make sure we have time to do. It wasn't requiring tonight's decision.
Well, we'll bring it as part of the next CIPs as we do. And the, I mean, there are a lot of pros and cons to it when we get to it. Buying down debt definitely sounds good. However, you know, when a city assumes four times the amount of debt that it has now, we are exposing ourselves to a lot of risks. Going back into the market, getting reviewed by credit rating agencies to, that flexibility to issue additional debt. So do we want to get rid, cash is always king. Do we want to get rid of the debt, or do we want to use that cash to pay down the debt service? So those are decisions. We'll have our financial advisors provide you more detailed analysis on each of those options.
Yeah. And I think a big part of that will just be, you know, what do we think our facilities' needs will be in those future years? Because I hate to be in a position where we've maxed out everything we can now, and then come 2025 or so, realize, oops, we actually need more money for things, and we should have saved room.
Oliver?
What is the additional cost over the life of the loan to borrow 120 million at a 30-year level payment basis versus a 20-year level principal basis?
I don't have that number on me. I know you've asked that before. Maybe if we go offline on this, I can work on one of the spreadsheets.
I think we could, we have it right in-- I think we can, we have it right in one of our spreadsheets. I think we can get that to you before this discussion is over here very shortly.
You can continue to ask your questions and.
That was my main question.
Okay.
Sure. Let's get, why don't we do Vice Mayor Connolly, then Mr. Duncan?
Usually when we're filling time, it's my turn to ask a question. Sorry. Thanks. Mr. Manager, at the town hall last Wednesday, you mentioned Fairfax City Experience jurisdiction not too dissimilar from us, who undertook an ambitious public facilities construction program and don't appear to have come to ruination. Do you have anything further on that? I mean, I think the community is looking for examples of success. We hear a lot about examples of failure and bankruptcies and so forth, but there are success stories. I fully expect Falls Church to be one of those success stories when we get through all this. But Fairfax City's experience, which you mentioned, might be useful for folks to know
The city of Fairfax undertook a police station, a new police station, a new city hall, or a significant expansion and renovation of city hall, a new library, and a new high school, all in a period of about four years. We've gone through some of those facilities, and we've discussed the financing strategy with Fairfax City at length on how they did this. I will say that, you know, they were very aware of the risks that they were taking on with this, and they were very concerned about it as they were entering into their capital program as well. They did typically structure their debt with longer terms because of the amount that they're taking on in that short period of time. They have, I think, a lot of discipline on their operating budget as they went through this process. And they have also taken on more in terms of more willingness to consider economic development, I think, than has probably been traditionally the case in recent years as part of that as well. But they did go through their process without tax rate increases that were directly attributable to their capital program. Now, they went through the recession, and they had tax changes as they grappled with the recession, just like everybody did. But they did, I think they had a goal of getting, at any rate, they tried to navigate through their cap, through their CIP without significant tax rate increases.
And I think you said at the town hall that they structured their debt to be long-term, but they were able to come back and renegotiate terms and pay some of that off in shorter time than they'd originally conservatively planned.
Yeah, I think that is correct. I don't know all the specifics on that. We've done the same thing for debt that we issued in the alts. We have refinanced a lot of that as interest rates have gone down to historic lows, and I think they were taking advantage of similar opportunities.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
A question on the length of debt. It's been suggested by some people that we should actually make all of our debt be 30-year debt. So that ties into Ms. Oliver's question. Should the library and city hall also be 30-year debt? What does that do?
Well, we could run those numbers. The city does have an adopted policy of structuring its debt at 20-year terms, and so that's a very wise policy, and that's a very old policy for the city. And so what it really does, and we feel it when Mary Ellen Henderson comes off her books, that's a really big deal for us, and we can look forward to that in 2025. So, you know, there are trade-offs to it.
I wouldn't just note that with respect to those charts, I mean, some of that may be subject to change as we negotiate with developers as well. In other words, we can negotiate a deal with the developer to receive payments that match up better with our own needs. And so it may be desirable, for example, to take less upfront to get more as a stream of income over time. So I think we need to really consider that, that we will get more information as this project unfolds or as the campus site unfolds, but I don't think we have all the information we need right at this moment. Are there other questions that we should move to public comment?
An answer for you.
Excuse me?
I have an answer to an earlier question.
Ah, okay.
So comparing the total debt service for a 30-year debt would be $351 million, and for a 20-year term would be $314 million. Essentially, 37 million gap between, difference between the two, 11% of total debt service.
Does that assume the same interest rate?
Yes.
Or does it, because it probably would be a lower interest rate for 20 years versus 30 years?
I'm assuming same, because there is a lot of volatility on the, in the market. We are only doing 15% in year one, and year two and year three are kind of out and kind of keeping the economics. I can change it a little, but it's, as far as our financial advisors go, they want to go even more conservative than the interest rates even we have used, so.
And so both the 314 and 351 are based on an assumption, same assumption of 3.5%?
3.5, 4.5, and 5.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Why don't we move on to public comment? We'll get back into questions and comments afterwards. Our first speaker is Mr. Lamone, followed by Mr. O'Hara. And if anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip and submit it to the clerk, and you'll be able to speak as well. Welcome.
Thank you. John Lamone, 304 Great Falls Street. I want to strongly support the Vipas recommendation and the well-argued letter that you received from them, from that organization, to postpone any decision on a George Mason High School referendum until citizens have been thoroughly and honestly briefed on all aspects of this project, which because of the costs and risks involved poses an existential threat to the city's future financial stability. For me, underlying this position are at least four major concerns. I think the city manager and the council have glossed over some important negative comments that were made by Alvers and Marshall to the council on June 26th around midnight, when no one was here, which call into question the reliability of the $40 million projected to be realized from the sale or lease of land for economic development at the George Mason site, and of course, the future tax yields from any such development. I'm glad that the council and the city manager have finally tried to at least initially address the longer-term implications of the excess of operating costs over revenues. I think this has to be much more clearly discussed, and policies to deal with this, explain to the citizens before any decision should be made on whether a referendum should go forward or not. And also related to this point, neither the council, the city manager, nor school representatives have made clear what the city's policies will be on approving future development complexes with significant housing units in the next 10 years or more. And the impact any such anticipated development, this is in addition to the George Mason site, will have on, A, school enrollment growth in its costs, B, the non-school operating costs of the city from further population growth, which has never been discussed as far as I am aware of, and C, additional infrastructure needs than any such new projects would generate. I also think there's really hasn't been any serious attempt to identify the additional costs to the city from tearing down the current George Mason building, or any new infrastructure costs that current plants will require, or the potential for cost overruns. And there's been no meaningful analysis, there have been some listing, but no analysis of the risks associated with building and financing a new high school. Just finally, I'm just changing the subject slightly, but in the interest of transparency, I call upon the council to establish a section on the city website that makes publicly available all the submitted public written comments on this or any other subject before the council, and to create a forum on the city website for citizens to address key public issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Charlie O'Hara, followed by Mr. Webb, our last speaker.
Charlie O'Hara, 2717 Welcome Drive Falls Church. I'm a member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks and have been for the last 27 years. I'm speaking here on behalf of myself, because since this issue has arisen, the advisory board hasn't had a chance to meet and discuss it. Timing-wise, I try to keep track of what's going on with Recreation and Parks. I talked with Danny on July 6th, and was told that Larry Graves project is still within the 2018 CIP and the modified CIP. We're looking good. They're still looking at it, but we're still looking good. Okay, well, let's not get up in arms at this point. So on July 17th, a week ago, at 11 o'clock, I was told for the first time that the modified CIP removes the Larry Graves project from the 2018 CIP and puts it back in, I think, 2025. The advisory board doesn't meet in July and August. It's the first time we've gotten the issue when I found out. Planning Commission's meeting that night, they're taking it up on their final talk. I get a letter to them, because I can't be there that night, nobody else from the advisory board can be there. Planning Commission votes for one. None of us can be present, and unfortunately, Lindy Hockenberry, our liaison, can also be present. So I think the timing of this is a detriment to the advisory board and to Recreation and Parks, and also to the city. I think the question is, you know, Larry Graves provides an opportunity for us to obtain a rectangular playing field, which the advisory board has been trying to look at different scenarios for about 10 years, if not more, because it's been a number-one priority. We've looked at expanding various parks. We've looked at various things. One of the things we've always had in the back of our mind was working with Fairfax County to expand our use of Larry Graves, which is a jointly-owned park. We could never get any traction with Fairfax County to do that. So this is the first time, in conversations last year, we had some traction with Fairfax County to turf Larry Graves Field, which will greatly increase the use of rectangular playing fields for our youth sports. It's an opportunity we attempted to jump on. We did jump on. Do we have a final agreement with them? No, we have a verbal agreement with them, because we can't do anything without money being allocated. There was money for open space acquisition that had been in the CIP for years. Last year in the, this last year or this year in the CIP, that was moved to this project. That had been there for years for the acquisition of open space. Now we get the project, we're looking at it getting done, and it's yanked away. I wonder if any of you in the last seven days since this has come forward have gone by either TJ or Madison, which are the two fields that we have used for our youth sports, to see what the condition of those fields are. If you haven't, I'd like to bring some. May I approach the bench? That's too many years of my litigation experience.
Of course, counsel. Of course.
Those fields are Bermuda grass. You can see the condition of them. The TJ field can no longer be used for what we call competition Saturday use, that can only be used on weekdays for practices. Madison is getting to that condition. So those are the two fields we control, Recreation and Park. The city and Recreation and Park control for the use of their practices for our youth sports. You ask, why do we need more? As you all know, the reason you're going through $120 million high school project and $160 million CIP project is the youth are increasing in our city. The same thing that happens with the city and school enrollment happens with our youth and rec sports enrollment. For an example, last year, 365 kindergarten through second-grade youths participated in soccer. This year, 435, an increase of 80 youths. That's 10 per team, that's eight teams. Where are they going to practice? What the turfing of Larry Graves Field provides is a field that can be used under all conditions. Currently, our grass fields, if there's rain, they have to be taken out of service. And that doesn't take them out of service for just the day of the rain. It takes them out of service for the next couple of days afterward until the field dries out. I've already spoken about the timing of this. It's important, because we have a Fairfax County Park Authority that is agreeing to talk with us, that'll allow this, to do this now. Who's going to be on the staff? Who's going to be in charge of Fairfax County in seven years when this comes up again? Your guess is as good as mine. We have somebody who's willing to talk with us now. That opportunity should be taken care of. You've heard of $160 million CIP. This is a $1 million project, 1/60 of the overall CIP. You've talked about numbers of, you know, I watched the slides of $200 increase or $300 increase in the cost. This is a $1 million project, which I believe is two cents on the CIP if it's funded, something along those lines. I'm going to end up briefly. You caused me to miss Jeopardy today, so I was going to ask at Jeopardy, some Jeopardy questions, but I'm going to give you some numbers instead. 65, 66% of all athletes who participated in George Mason Sports last year were once members of the youth and rec support, sports in the city. With regard to soccer, the boy's soccer, which won, till this year, won four straight state champions, 71.4 people who participated in those sports participated in Falls Church youth sports. Girls soccer, 87.5% of the participants in this year's varsity girls soccer participated in youth sports in the city. That's a 10-time state championship, champion. And you need to consider those youths who are now in first grade and kindergarten as they move into this program. And this project, the turfing of Larry Fields, should maintain in this, in the amended CIP, should remain in the current year and not put off for seven years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the extended time.
All right. Our next speaker and last speaker is Lawrence Webb, Chair of the School Board. If anyone else wishes to speak, you're welcome to. Just please fill out a speaker slip in the near future. Welcome.
Thank you all very much. Lawrence Webb, 202 West Columbia Street. Here before you deny talking more about the next vote that you'll be taking of the moving of the school board referendum. In conversations that I've had with the school superintendent and colleagues, we recognize that we're asking you all, as well as the community, to undertake a major step in our community. Within taking that major step, I think it's a step that is something that will benefit both sides of the shop here. With the schools, we have a great school system with great teachers, great students, but at this point right now with the high school, we do not have facilities that reflect what our school system has become and known in the region. This is something that has been kicked down the can a number of times, and I think both sides, the city council as well as the school board, has worked very hard to, over the last probably two years, doing studies, working with consultants, getting numbers validated to actually really know what a new school is going to cost us. When I'm looking at this, we could have potentially, as I hear in the community, why did Arlington, why did places like that have their schools cost less than ours? Quite frankly, part of it is because we waited and waited to find the perfect time to do this, and at the end of the day, there is not a perfect time to do this. The $120 million number, it's a large number, and it's a big investment on our part of the community. The schools recognize that. We've already started discussions amongst the board, looking at ways to potentially not do value engineering, but actually look at ways that will cut the cost of the school. But what we don't want to do is shortchange ourselves that we're going to be coming back to you again, asking for additional. The $120 million, I think, gives us that room to do that. We've already talked about places where we can potentially cut sizes of our auditorium for arts events, which is larger right now in the drawings than some of our neighboring jurisdictions that are larger than us. We are also looking at ways to, as Dr. Nune has put out, our operating cause. We stand and pledge to work with you to tighten our belts over the next several years, because we do recognize we're asking for a big investment from the city and the community. We'll do all we can to tighten our belts over the next years as the project begins moving towards getting, getting started, as well as the economic development part of it. We'll do our part to keep our costs as tight as possible. But with us, part of that is, we don't control. If If students show up at our schools, it is our job and responsibilities to educate those students. We will do things. We will, as a board, talking with our community. We may have to do some things slightly different than what we've had to do in the past to make sure that we can afford this. We have other projects, as you all know, that are being talked about with TJ. So we have other projects. So we recognize we have a big ask in front of you. But we wouldn't be in front of you asking for this if we did not feel this is the right time to do this. We can work together. Myself and my colleagues are willing to roll up our sleeves, working with you, tightening our belts to make sure that on our side, as well with you all, making sure that the operating costs are held in fine efficiencies, which we've talked about numerous times. But I think if we can continue to have those conversations and find those ways, I think we can work together and make this possible. And again, we're working towards of cost cutting as well on our side that will not shortchange our students, but make the new school the right fit for us for a long-term solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that was the last speaker who has submitted a speaker slip. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? If not, we will move on to council comments. Is there, we have an objection. The wedding will not go forward. Go on forward, and let's hear your comments, Ms. Kuchma.
Sorry for being late. I was listening. So it is live, just so you know. So Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. I just want to comment, thank you all and everyone and the School Board for all the work on the George Mason Project. But talking to people in the community, there is a concern that they would like more information. And while I agree very much with a lot of what Mr. Webb was saying, I was very, my interest was piqued by the idea to delay moving forward until we can get more information out into the community. It'd be great if we could see sort of the whole thing, you know, the costs and the operating costs and what the total tax impact will be as a package, because I was listening to Mr. Shields' presentation, and there's words coming out that sound rosy. It's $0.04, and I just can't imagine it's only going to be $0.04. So there's information that comes out, and people are busy, and they kind of take bites. And, you know, we don't want it said later that, well, I heard this, and then there's a surprise. Why not be really transparent about what we think the total cost impact will be? And then my other concern, and to what Mr. Webb was saying about the school being really careful with expenditures, and I'm sure they will be, but it's really hard just to understand the climate for the community. I mean, we were told by, I guess, Susan Kearney, that the school budget was bare bones at a time where we were, I think it was a 10% increase. And so there's still this trust issue. We have a new superintendent. We're all willing to turn the corner, but there is a concern is, can we hold down these costs? And how do you do it when the populations are growing and we need teachers and we need to pay them and all of that? So I would just ask that perhaps the idea, just think about the idea of delaying the vote until we can really be transparent about the tax impact, because it's a really important project, and I think Mr. Webb is really right. You know, we delay anymore, it's going to be more expensive, but let's do this really transparently. So that's really my only comment, and thank everybody for their work. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have any additional comments or additional questions? I imagine we have some comments. Any additional questions for staff? How about comments then? Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Can I move to adopt?
Yes, you can make a motion as well.
Can I move to adopt 2017-11A?
And that is the full?
The ordinance to amend, yes, it's the full CIP ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now let's go ahead and have comments if we can. Do we have comments? Ms. Hardy?
Alrighty. So it shouldn't be a surprise to my colleagues and to people in the audience that I remain concerned about the city taking on the full CIP as the motion on the table. I will vote to support the Modified CIP instead, which is incidentally what both the Planning Commission and staff have recommended to us. I don't want to get into the merits of specific projects and pit them against each other. I think we could be here all night talking about new timelines or which project should go first, so I'll speak more generally about the principles behind my vote. The crux of my concern is that with the full CIP, the risk is that we're simply trying to do too much at once. We would be quadrupling our debt to $218 million, which is a huge lift for a little city of our size. Nearly every public building in the city would be under construction within a five-year period. The Modified CIP has more modest tax rate increase that citizens may be more likely to support. In a Modified CIP, all of the projects still happen, but our sequence through the years when we receive land transaction payments and old debt comes off the books. Frankly, that just seems like common sense and is what responsible financial management looks like. I sincerely believe it's more prudent to sequence projects, increase the chances of executing these projects well, so we don't jeopardize the city financially. So I will go line by line through kind of the details of my reasoning. The first is I think there's just no room for error and no room for opportunity if we execute the full CIP. It's an ambitious plan that leaves little room. I know that we have long deferred capital needs and many projects are waiting in the queue, but without more sequencing, we could have unexpected costs or opportunities that come up, and we might not be able to get to them. One of those could be TJ, and it wouldn't be a proper CIP meeting without me bringing up TJ, so I will get to TJ comments later. We also assume that projects come in at the price expected, which, given our recent experience with Mount Daniel and City Hall costs, that has not come true. Finally, with the prospect of selling or long-term leasing 10 acres at George Mason, land acquisition elsewhere in the city is going to be an important strategic opportunity, and if those opportunities come up, I want to make sure we have money to do that. Second, we're using several new-to-us creative financing levers in order to afford the full CIP, things we talked about tonight, like 30-year versus 20-year bonds, level debt versus level principal payment structures, using reserves to pay for debt service. Using reserves to pay for debt service is similar to using your savings account to pay for mortgage payments. I think that's an easy way to people understand kind of the level of risk that we're taking on. And there's also many underlying assumptions that we have to come true in order for the plan to be executed as laid out. We're also heavily reliant on that land transaction, which is a third party, subject to factors like the macroeconomy and the political climate, all things that we can't control to make the numbers work. And finally, operationally, I'm concerned about our ability to juggle expansions and renovations at nearly every public building in the city at nearly the same time. I'd rather we prioritize the projects and focus on executing a handful at a time instead of everything at once. So while last week we looked at the new long-term tax yield, and it did make things look more rosy, I think as stewards of the city's finances, I think we should look beyond the best-case scenario and take on these costs with our eyes wide open. I'm not quite done yet. I still have a few more caveats I want while I have the floor. So on that point, though, I do have a couple additional concerns, even in the Modified CIP scenario. I appreciate Mr. Webb's comments about the School Board's commitment to bring down costs and tighten our belts operationally, but I would encourage the School Board to find additional savings in that 120 number. Perkins Eastman did offer some potential cost savings measures that are based on benchmarking our school versus our neighboring jurisdiction, and as I understand it, we're only taking 30% of those cost savings to be conservative. I don't want to shortchange this school any more than the next person. I want to make sure this is a school that will last us 50 years. But in my opinion, using benchmarking data now that tells us where we're high in certain areas of the program seems far wiser than trying to value engineer the project down the road. We have a shared responsibility to ensure that we're being prudent in the cost of our new school, and I'd love to see more work to bring down that 120 number. Second, TJ. I said I would get to that. I remain concerned that we can need more capacity in the elementary grades earlier than what's planned in either the full or the Modified CIP scenario, which is another reason why I believe we should give ourselves some breathing room to take care of those costs. I've heard the concerns from the elementary PTA tonight and families who are unclear about what is going on with the status of Mount Daniel, or confused how we're going to address TJ and where that money is going to come from. Even in the full CIP scenario, unless TJ construction happens concurrently with George Mason or as soon as possible, it really doesn't even solve the crowding issues at TJ. Ultimately, what I think is missing that gives people confidence in our ability to pull this off is a proactive capacity plan across all the facilities. How will the timing of Mount Daniel construction, second grade moving or not moving, and if it does move to Mount Daniel, what are the pros and cons of doing that and then moving it back? And then a broad look at all of our facilities and construction plans so we're not firefighting from one project to another. I will acknowledge that this is wholly in the domain of the School Board, but I'm sure to much my colleagues dismay, I will remain a broken record on this because it does impact the city as a whole. Without such a plan, it requires us to pull money off projects and find money elsewhere in order to fight those fires, and ultimately, that puts off capital needs that we have elsewhere in the city. Finally, a message for everyone in the audience and at home. So regardless of whether we end up with the full or modified CIP, I really hope we don't make this into a divisive issue for the community. The decision tonight in front of us, in my mind, is not whether we support Larry Graves or whether we support George Mason or whether we support the library. As a community, we need to be cognizant not to pit projects against one another. Let's not take sides. Stand alone, every project in the CIP has merit. In the ideal world, we could do it all, and we could do it all at once. So to me, the decision is a very rational one. It's a matter of timing and sequencing and prioritizing. Now that we have a cost estimate for an ambitious high school plan, it seems prudent for me to sequence projects and take care of the needs. When commercial development comes online, if we get land payments or tax benefits earlier or greater than expected, I'll be the first to advocate to doing more of these capital projects earlier. I think ultimately, we all have the shared goal of building the best facilities we can as affordably as possible that the public will support, and I believe sequencing projects is the financially responsible thing to do, and ultimately ensures that we can do each project successfully.
Thank you very much. And who else has a comment or would like to speak? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I will support the full CIP, primarily because it includes the things I believe are important to the citizens of our little city, recs and parks, and their opportunity to redo the turf at Larry Graves Park. Did not visit Madison or TJ today or last week, but I did drive by Larry Graves. I could see the opportunity there. Also include the library. There are people here that will recall that are either supported or I was behind providing information to move the library, maybe not once, maybe not twice, but well aware of those circumstances, I still think that those were a good idea. But the people of our city voted to move ahead on the library, and I think that should be honored. I don't think that as leaders and having heard from the people that we can now say that we should push it out another, well, 10 years afterwards for us voted in. I'm also in favor of moving ahead on the renovations to City Hall. I picked up a CIP from 2003 and looked at it, and at that time, there's a comment that said, "We need to reduce City Hall," and it might be as much as $4 million. I looked at that and said, "We need to do this now." Having said all that, I've agonized long and hard about the really big CIP item, which is the Georgia Mason High School. And I would say there's been a lot of work that has already been done on this project. Nearly four years ago and three school superintendents ago, we started a closed session public-private education agreement process. And after spending years of this black box, it was decided that this approach just did not work for many reasons. Since then, there has been a focus to restart the effort, with the key component being the decoupling of the economic development activity from school needs. I was an early and vocal proponent of the decoupling. There's a lot to appreciate of the talent and considerable time staff has put into this effort and the many hours already of citizen investment. We've also spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, approaching $1 million, on consultant fees, experts outside council, and strategic facilitation costs. Out of this, a journey approach has evolved. I believe while the current direction has many good ideas, the approach at this point remains just a collection of aspirational ideas. It does not qualify as a strategy because a strategy would have a set of principles and a proposal before is, don't have these fundamentals. It also does not qualify as a plan because a plan would have milestones, critical dependencies, and most importantly, contingencies, management reserve, and alternative pathways if and when. Scheduled activities do not meet expectations or encounter resistance. So for me, the proposal addressing the high school is an existential question and not just a multi-general decision. Right now, too much is relying on hope, and we all know that hope is not a coherent strategy. Many questions remain unanswered. Surely, the most important one is, what does it mean if the referendum, proposed referendum coming after this is approved this fall or if it fails? Does passage mean that the city is authorized to increase real estate taxes, some say as much as $0.20 on the current rate? Does figure to pass mean that the citizens do not want a new high school, or does it mean that they're unhappy with the question being asked based on the progress so far? So I've got some questions. Many of them have been stated, for example, the following. Operational costs. Question, projected to be roughly 4% for the schools and 2.5% for the city going forward? Sitting aside any other needs that will have to be accommodated, what is the strategy to generate the annual revenue needed without a commensurate increase in additional school-aged children? Question, uncertainty of economic development, and more importantly, what kind? The market, the financial markets, continue to smile favorably on multifamily construction, which we already have said we don't want more of. Question, lack of movement on economic development. After nearly four years of talking about new economic development, what we have to show for it is four years of talk and several hundred thousand of consultant fees paid. We continue to show little movement in connecting development with our neighbors adjacent to the site. Also, it's clear in my mind that Fairfax will want a piece of the action. Question, should we place programmatic reliance on economic development not yet proposed? Is there merit to counting chickens before they have come home to roost? Question, reliance on constant increase in city real estate assessments. Is it prudent to count on a constant 2.5% each year for the next 15 years? Question, can we count on a reliable stream of federal and state subsidies, small as they already are? Question, what is desire for community-facing facilities? An auditorium, an art space, adult athletic facilities, swim center, library, are they still ambiguous and unresolved? Question, what is the need for teacher expansion in the very near future because the Mount Daniel approved plan resulted in less student seats and there's no appetite to split a grade? How do we pay for that? Question, how do we address significantly reduced debt capacity in future years? Question, what is the public's position on a 30-year bond versus a 20-year bond? A 30-year bond instrument is an outlier that's not used in our adjoining jurisdictions frequently and adds significantly to the overall cost. Question, what is the ability of our city in total to execute and execute well? Consider two well-publicized recent events. Finally, the job of senior leadership is to address and drive down vulnerabilities and reduce risk. In other words, we should proceed only after we address the known unknowns and identify the areas of unknown unknowns. And the first category then is, how do we pay for the increase in what modern metro fees in the coming years? For the second one, without an abundance of cash reserves, the second category of unknown unknowns will be inadequately resourced. I agree with the Vipas Board as well as some of the comments in the citizen blogs. There is time to get this right. Strategy first, then a plan. We don't need to act by referendum this fall. I know that the good folks of Falls Church remain committed to our excellent schools and I count myself among them, but that might not translate to a vote for referendum with so many questions left unanswered. Let's take the time to get this right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank all of our citizens who are here this evening, those who have written to us, those that have appeared in prior meetings. Especially want to thank the School Board, the Planning Commission, the Library Board, Parks and Rec, Vipas, and all the other groups that have commented to us on these very, very fundamental issues. So let me say a couple of things. When we began talking about the potential for a new high school, there was one bottom line for me from the beginning, and that was that the voters have the final say about a project of that size and that risk, because let's face it, it's the largest by far capital project that the city has ever undertaken, and there's significant risk with or without economic development. So the question comes back repeatedly, what's affordable? In my view, what's ultimately In my view, what's ultimately affordable is what the citizens say it is through their votes. And so I'll be voting to put this issue to the citizens. It's clear that now is an appropriate time to do it, the school board. Most of our citizens that have expressed a view on it have said, "Let's move forward. Let's get it to the voters, provide as much information as possible. But now's the time to move." So recognizing that, I'm content that this issue be decided by the voters, and I will act according to their vote, one way or the other. Second point I want to make is that when you take the long view of the CIP, three-quarters of all those impacts you saw on the screen arise out of this one project, that's the high school. With regard to the modified CIP, I think that it's odd and ultimately not defensible to add a huge new project not approved by the voters, while at the same time delaying, in the case of the library, a much smaller project already approved by the voters in the name of fiscal responsibility. I think that sends exactly the wrong signal to the voters. Yeah, we'll put an issue to you, but we'll do what we want anyway. So I think that's my principal reason for not supporting the modified CIP, along with the delay on the recreation facilities as well. A couple of other points that I want to make. I think we're going to continue to fine-tune these projects as we go forward, to a significant extent, perhaps in some cases. I still think there are some improvements we need to make on the City Hall plan. The library is what it is. The recreation facilities are what they are. And we will be working very, very hard to wring out as many costs as possible, but still provide the kind of school facilities that are needed both now and the future. Finally, I think we've done a lot of studying. We've had a lot of consultant work. There's been a lot of public discussion. There'll continue to be more. This is, after all, the City of Falls Church, something that I'm very proud to be part of. But ultimately, I think it reflects the community's view that we put this issue before the community at this point. And I will abide by their decision on whether they are willing to take on the risk and the expenditures regarding the school. The rest of the CIP, I think, has been, at least generally, well-discussed and considered over the years. And so I think we need to move forward on that. So for all these reasons, I'll be voting to support moving forward on the full CIP tonight, with the strong interest in maintaining our dialogue with our citizens on all these projects, to make sure that we get the very best value for their investment, and that we keep in mind, to the extent that we can, tax rates. And I will abide by the decision of the voters on the school project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Connally?
So this has been a, the CIP conversation has been a really hard decision for me, because I listened to my colleagues, and everybody makes sense. And so what I did recently was, I looked back, and the schools provided this really interesting history of the George Mason High School campus project from 1949 up until now. And you can see, there are lots of dates in there. So as Abraham Lincoln said, fourscore and seven years ago, but it wasn't really that long ago, it was close, threescore and eight years ago, the founders of Falls Church had a vision of an independent city with its own school division. So I read through the history of our city, as told by bond referendums and construction projects, and two things really stood out to me. It's never been easy, and it's always been worth it. Building projects are always expensive. They can be risky, but they're necessary to maintain the community that we can be proud of, the community that has lasted threescore and eight years so far, that reflects our shared values. The citizens in 1957 had almost the same concerns about a George Mason High School addition that many people do today, as we consider a brand-new school. Can we afford it? Are we building too much or not enough? What if it doesn't work out the way we expect it to? And do we need more time to decide? The volume of email and citizen comment that has come through in the past month is truly impressive, considering that it's summertime, and a lot of people supposedly aren't paying attention, but you're all here tonight. And so many people feel really passionately about our city. The library, the schools, the tax rates, the fields, safety, sustainability, risk. So again, while it may not be easy to make this decision, you've proven that it is worth it. Four years ago, the citizens approved a referendum to sell our water system to Fairfax in exchange for our campus land. And they also elected four of us, Mr. Z, Mr. Snyder, Ms. Oliver, and me, on the same day. So our term on council has included many important topics. And there's been one constant throughout, and that's been our focus on this campus project. And this council is determined to do something that's right for the city. And as you can hear, we don't always agree on all the details, but we all agree that it's worth it. So tonight's vote on the CIP and the school bond referendum are not the culmination of the past four years, or even of the past threescore and eight years. It's more like we're at the almost halfway point, and the next big step is one that our community has to take together. There's still a lot of work to do to make sure that our strategy for this ambitious CIP becomes a rock-solid plan and then a true reality. So I'm supporting the full CIP, because I want to do the best for our citizens, all of our citizens, enhance our community with the new high school, a modern, safe city hall, an ADA-accessible, welcoming library, and adequate playing fields, and eventually, space for more elementary students. In the past few months, our city and school staff have worked through many models. We've looked at different school models. We've looked at different financing models. I think we've almost equaled fourscore and seven models and scenarios to explain how these models work. And each time, they're better, and they're more airtight, and they're less risky. But that doesn't mean that it's risk-free, or that we have all the answers. So I really want to thank consultants and citizens and the staff for their input and the work that's gone into this. Two weeks ago, I said that sometimes you have to take a leap of faith and just do it. But this is more than a blind leap of faith. We've got four years of work behind us, good data, solid strategy, strong advice, a commitment to keep operating and capital costs as low as possible. And I think we're ready to take the next step for all the citizens. We have a lot of time in the next three months to explain it to everyone and educate everyone, so that those that are afraid that we're moving too quickly will really be educated. And the FAQs that Mr. Shields and I talked about, I think will go a long way towards making sure that everybody understands and that we're completely transparent on this project. So it's not going to be easy, but I am certain that it will be worth it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Oliver?
So I'm not going to talk all that long, because I know mine is a minority opinion, and that I, my position is not shared by anybody else on council at this point, at least that they've mentioned to me. My position is that, as a city, we should not move forward right now with a referendum for $120 million high school. The reason for that is twofold. One, you should never vote for something to go to referendum if you think it's a bad idea. People can be fooled. I've heard people on this dais say to me, "Oh, lots of people told me they voted for the library, because they didn't know it would mean we couldn't do the school." So I think that if you're not prepared to accept the referendum, you shouldn't vote for it. So I don't want to take it to the voters if I think it's a really bad decision, because they might vote for it, and I think that that's very valid. But my point has been that it's not clear to me that we have to move forward with $120 million high school. And I want to talk first about the process that the library board went through. When they initially said, "We need a new library," they had grand schemes for what they wanted. And they had a library project that they proposed that was $25 million, and that was several years ago, so it's probably higher. And the planning commission and the city council said, "Nope, that's too much. You can have 8 million. Go figure out what you can do with it." And they came back and they said, "Well, for 8 million, we can renovate. We can do a little expansion, and we can get most of, well, some of what we wanted, and it'll be, it'll be better than what we have now, and it will allow us to do, to meet the American Disability Act, and it'll give us a little bit more space, and that's a good thing." So when I look at the school process, I think, have we ever really said, "What is it that you can do with what we can afford?" And I know some people on the dais will say, "Yes, we looked at that. We looked at all these different options. We looked at 27 different options. We looked at everything, and it just wasn't worth it to only spend 20 or 40 million on the school right now." And that might be true, but it might be true because we didn't ask the right question. Nobody ever said, "Okay, really, all you can have is $40 million. How much good can you do? Go out and be creative and figure out what we, as a city, can do for $40 million." And when I say we asked the wrong question, I think that that's important to understand that in the feasibility study, we said, "How can you meet everything on the school's wish list and give us 10 acres of land?" And lo and behold, everything came in between 100 and 120 million. So you're probably wondering, "Where's my $40 million come from?" Well, it comes back to my second key point. The city has financial policies. Those financial policies are there to make sure that we ensure this city can continue, that we do not risk too much of this city at any one time. When you look at those financial policies, they say that we're going to issue 20-year level principal debt. That ensures that future councils have some debt capacity that they can use. When we go to 30-year level payment debt, it is almost 20 years, I think, before we get back. Mr. Shields can probably correct me. But it is not 10 years before we have half our debt capacity back. It's much, much longer. That means, by approving this type of financing, this council ties the hand of future councils in a way that I don't think is safe and that I, and I think is too risky. So, you know, $120 million, is it affordable? Maybe it's affordable. Do I think that we can get the financing for it? Yes, we may pay a premium on the interest. You know, do I think that we can get the land sale? Yes, we may get it at a discount, and, you know, but it'll still take the edge off the affordability. Do I think that the citizens might decide that they're willing to pay that much, up to 15, 18 cents, for the high school? Yeah, they might actually vote to do that. But we take on too much risk. We limit too much of the future of the city. And so I'm just not prepared to vote for any CIP that has $120 million high school in it at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the matter before us, the CIP, I will vote to support the full CIP. I have a expectation, I think we have an obligation, and I have an expectation that this council and school board will do the work that is required to generate the revenue that we need to keep this community moving forward together. And moving forward together, in this instance, means work on the library, work on City Hall, work on recreational facilities, and of course, work on school facilities. As the manager mentioned, we have multiple levers. We will be grabbing them all in the coming years. The most important that we will grab, I believe, is the operating cost lever. We are going to have to show extraordinary discipline, particularly in the next two to three years, on operating costs on the city and school side in order to put ourselves in position to do these extraordinary facilities work. But I think, from where I sit, right here, right now, that is the most important thing that I can press for, to leave a city for future generations that is in a good position to meet whatever challenges of the future it may face. You know, my son was born in 1993. That was a year after the library was last renovated. He's now finished graduate school. I think it's time, in the instance of the library, once every 25 years or so, to do what needs to be done. And similarly with the other facilities, we do need to be mindful of our generational obligations going ahead. For me, economic development is the final and most important lever that we can pull. I know it's controversial. I know some people don't like certain aspects of it. In my opinion, the economic development that we've done has been, you know, not only revenue-enhancing, but also community-building. I see it every time I go out and, you know, have dinner, meet people in places that didn't exist in this city only 15 years ago. And I think we have a wonderful opportunity to not only build our revenue capacity, but also build our community capacity to do that thing which is most important, which is bring us all together as one people, doing good things for the children who come after us and setting them up for success, so that they can make the city greater, even still than it is today.
Okay, is there anyone else who has anything additional they'd like to say? If not, I'll go ahead and give you my comments. I agree with those who feel there's little room for error in the full CIP. We can't have the same sort of cost overruns and other issues we've had at Mount Daniel. We just don't have that margin of error, particularly in the George Mason campus site. And I like the appeal of spreading things out. And so I share many of those concerns with those who support a modified plan. Nonetheless, I view this from a slightly different lens, which is, I am, although I'm supporting the full CIP, I'm willing to change when necessary. In other words, when, if things change as we go forward with this, then that may necessitate changes in our schedule, or our timeframe, or what we can accomplish based on what happens as we go forward. So I am willing to support the full CIP, but I'm also stating now that I'm willing to make changes, as changes need to be made, to make sure that the finances of this city and other needs of this city are met as we go forward. I agree with Mr. Duncan and others who feel the operating budgets for the city and the schools, we really need to take a hard look at those and make sure that we can keep those under control for the next couple of years to help us get through this, swallow this big pill of all the really incredible capital needs that we're attempting to accomplish in the next few years. I'm also hopeful we'll find additional cost savings at George Mason. And I'm hopeful as well that economic development can be managed in a way that will even be more accretive to the city than is currently estimated. So for those reasons, with those caveats, I will support the full CIP proposal. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Ms. Carries?
Okay. Let's move on to the next item, which is related. It's already been called as part of the, did she already call the? Okay, why don't you go ahead and call that then, please?
TO 17-12 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $120 million to pay costs incident to constructing, expanding, reconstructing, equipping, and/or re-equipping in whole or in part a new or renovated high school and a portion of a middle school, and requesting the Circuit Court to order a special referendum election on the question of whether the issuance of such bonds should be authorized.
Mr. Shields, anything to add?
No. I would just mention, there's been one addition to the ordinance, which was requested by council last time. It appears at lines, let's see, 118 and 119. And it's simply a statement of intent. It states, "Whereas city council intends to defray part of the cost of the bonds by using up the 10.34 acres of land for private development purposes." And so this was added since the first reading, and there's no need for a re-advertising, but I just want to let you know that it's in there. And otherwise, this is the same ordinance that you saw at first reading.
Okay. Are there additional comments, or not comments, but questions? I'm going to open this up to public comment, even though I imagine we've heard most of the comments on this matter. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to this particular item, who hasn't spoken already, seeing none of the matters close to the public? Are there additional comments from council regarding this item? If not, why don't we take a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TO 17-12, and I want to check with the city attorney if that's the exact right motion.
Yes, it is. That's correct.
Move to approve TO 17-12.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All right. Unless there are any additional comments or questions, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connally?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
No.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes?
Okay. Let's go on to the next item, which is... Is there anyone who has any desire to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move the items on consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and do this by roll call?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Okay. Is there any business not on the agenda, but standing in a regional committee, council liaison reports? Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of minutes. Last week, although I was out of the city, I had the opportunity to participate for two hours on a transportation planning board meeting. The main issue in that meeting was a package of 10 long-term proposals. The most discussed one was an additional Potomac River crossing that would be somewhere, probably connecting Loudoun County to Montgomery County. An amendment, a motion was made to amend the package of 10 long-term projects to remove that bridge. I voted for that on this basis. The Montgomery County Council had voted unanimously to oppose that project. Under those circumstances, and we were told by the chairman of the Montgomery County Council that there is no way that project would go forward, it seemed to me a waste of study resources to spend them on that rather than other projects that, in fact, might move forward and have a significant positive impact in the region. But I was mostly concerned about a precedent that would be set when the governing board of a jurisdiction votes unanimously, and not just any jurisdiction, but a principally affected jurisdiction, voted unanimously against the project, that that vote, in essence, would be overridden by a regional body. And so I felt that to represent our interests, because we're a small jurisdiction, and frankly, we wouldn't like someone, for example, expanding Route 7, six more lanes in the middle of our business district, is something clearly we would oppose. So I voted in that way. Then, when the issue came up with the entire package, I voted with those who abstained from that package. My principal reason is that it occurred to me that the package was nothing but a lot of long-term projects that would continue to encourage sprawl and induce congestion overall. And even though the list of projects was somewhat balanced between transit and roads, my fear was that the road projects would go forward, the transit projects would not, and we really wouldn't be improving the region. Finally, I felt that the overall package was looking to the past rather than the future. The fact is, there'll be huge technological changes over the next few years in the transportation sector, and we need a transportation program that is more built on projecting forward to the future rather than looking to the same old mistakes of the past and repeating them. So I just want to explain the reasons for those votes. And I also felt that environmentally, the package didn't do much for the region and might actually lead to worse air quality than we have now. So for all those reasons, I abstained in that package, I vote on that package. I just wanted to explain that to council, and pleased to take any questions people have offline, follow-up.
Anyone else have any -- Ms. Hardy?
Actually, a request, but I held off on making it earlier. I didn't want to be premature ahead of our vote. So now that we voted to put the referendum on the ballot for November, I feel like we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of communication with the community. So building off of what Vice Mayor Connolly said around the FAQs, I think there's a whole lot more we need to do in addition to that. Based on the feedback we've heard about, just so much information for people to absorb and given it's summertime, I'd like to spend some time in the next work session to talk about what that communication strategy looks like. I know the city as a whole has to stay neutral and can't advocate a position one way or the other on a project, but I think it behooves us to actually inform voters and what they're signing up for. So essentially, the presentation, as it evolves, I'd like to outline what that series of meetings looks like, potentially a mailbox that people can write into with questions, so it goes to kind of a dedicated place and doesn't get lost among all of our other emails, the FAQs that we talked about, and any other ideas. I think the next three months will be really important to make sure that people are well-informed before they head to the polls.
Okay. And along those lines, I think it behooves us as well to really come up with a timetable, not just FAQs, but other ways to put out information, whether it's town halls, have the consultants available at certain times to be able to directly interact and communicate with the citizens, and just whatever we need to do to make sure we have an informed populace and voters. Mr. Z?
Just one small item. I returned last week from a day in Richmond where I chaired the Environmental Quality Committee for BML. It's one of the six top-tier committees, and it's my first time at that as chair, and really grateful for all the great staff work that BML and our cities and towns and districts in Virginia have put into this, both people from Northern Virginia as well as Southern Virginia. I want to say in general that the council member from Staunton, Virginia, led the charge to enhance our position on renewables, renewable power. There was an initiative from the city of Roanoke to introduce the ability for local jurisdictions to regulate plastics in the waste stream. So these are the things that are being looked at, and I'm happy to work with council staff here as we develop our legislative agenda for this coming year to be able to introduce these elements as well, so we have symmetry. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you for your service on that committee and our representation of the city. Are there any other council member comments or requests? There are no meeting minutes to be approved tonight. Is that correct? All right. Is there anything else to be said tonight?
Mayor, move adjourn.
Sounds like a plan. What do you say?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.